I was like, well, that's.
You know, we have the.
A greeting that's different. It made me laugh. Have a nice life.
That was very blonde.
I meant that sincerely. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, November seventeenth. I call this meeting in order at seven o'clock. Please everyone stand and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please, we please call roll.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Benish.
Here.
Councilmember Shavelin.
Here.
Councilmember Gra.
Here.
Mayor Hubbard.
Here. All right, next we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, a motion from councilmember Ben- Benish.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Hatfield. All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Agenda is adopted. And next we have a proclamation. And this is the first proclamation that I've had to do. And the really fun thing about that is I don't have a proclamation in front of me. So, let me look at my agenda. I always thought they were, um, there's like a file folder and.
But we had, we had some packet issues today, so.
Oh, okay, well, all right. No, it's okay. I, I can use technology to my ability here. So, this is new territory for me, and I'm, I'm very excited to do this one because this is a proclamation and recognition of Small Business Saturday on November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. So, whereas for generations, small businesses within the city of Chaska have shaped and embodied our community's entrepreneurial spirit and driven our economy forward. And whereas, Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small businesses and communities across the country and is celebrated each year on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas by shopping small, consumers make a big impact on their community and local small businesses. On average, of sixty-seven cents of every dollar spent as small business, it stays within the local community. And whereas the city of Chaska supports and recognizes its small locally owned businesses for the many investments they make, the jobs they create, and the generous contributions they provide to further the quality of life we all enjoy. Whereas Chaska urges all residents to support their local small businesses on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Taylor Hubbard, mayor of the city of Chaska, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby proclaim November twenty ninth as Small Business Saturday. In witness whereof, I have, I have hereon to set my hand and the seal of the city of Chaska this seventeenth day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. Awesome. All right, and you, and I guess that's it, right? All right. Yay for Small Business Saturday. Okay. Well, that moves us right along to our visitor presentation. Is anybody in the audience here to speak to a matter that is not on the agenda? This is the time to come up and make it known. All right, well then that moves us right along to the approval of previous meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were for, um, uh, November third, two thousand and twenty-five. Does anybody have any additions or corrections of the, the minutes? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve minute.
All right, motion from councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Benish. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. That moves us down to our consent items. These items are generally need little to no discussion. Although if there is something that needs to be pulled off the consent item agenda, it certainly can. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off or have any questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I just had a question on E, the cannabis registration. That's a local business that's already established, correct? Right at the, right next to Dunkin' there? I just didn't recognize that.
No.
Yeah. No, it's not.
Isn't it the tobacco shop right next to Dunkin'?
No.
No?
No.
No, it's a new business.
Okay.
Is it going next to Dunkin'? Because that's the.
Yes.
That's the address.
Okay, because, okay.
There's a small space in between Edible India and Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
Oh, so there's the tobacco shop.
On the end.
On the other end.
It's on the north end.
On the other end of this.
This is on the south end.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I just didn't recognize.
Those questions.
I didn't, well, I didn't recognize the name of the company, and it might be a holding company.
Yeah, that's, well, that was what I thought as well.
What is that? Okay.
Now, while we're asking questions, this is the sec, and maybe it says this here, and I missed it. So, we are allowing three, right? And this is the second.
Higher place is the first.
Right, higher place is the first. So, there's still one more. Do we have any idea of if anybody has any? We wouldn't have anything, right, until the state gives their stamp of approval?
No, I mean, there's been one that's shown some interest, but in a location that would need a significant amount of work done to it.
Right, okay.
But other than that, we haven't.
Okay.
Thank you. But if there's two downtown now, are we looking to move one up towards, up, whatever they call it, uptown?
Yeah, we didn't put any restrictions on the zoning or.
Yeah, we weren't, we're not able to put that type of, we can put restrictions like being so far from a daycare or a school or things like that, but we basically approve the ordinance to establish it in commercial districts.
Yeah, because if we had enacted those other ones, it would.
It would be nowhere, I remember.
Yeah, well, it would have all been on Chaska Commons, yeah. So, great questions.
Are they solely going to be doing, dealing in cannabis? Are they going to be dealing in THC edibles, that sort of thing? I mean, to have two right there that.
Yeah, it seemed like a lot to me, too.
Deal in similar product.
Well, for a short time period. One thing I was going to mention about the, the low potency hemp products, that whole industry is going to completely change.
Right.
Because of the federal law change that happened for the budget bill last week, basically reversed the farm bills, allowing of low potency hemp drive from, or THC drive from hemp.
THC drinks.
Um, and so, for all practical purposes, unless things change, that's going to eliminate, like beverages in liquor stores or low potency things and, you know, in a tobacco shop, those types of things. Everything will have to go through dispensary.
Interesting.
Yeah, there's a really interesting article in Star Tribune about Minnesota's being frustrated because Minnesota set a pretty good example of the THC stuff and regulated it and, and it, in one false swoop, it gets, it's gone. So, yeah, it's interesting.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from councilmember Hatfield and a second from councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? All right, our consent items are approved. And then we're moving right along to our action items, which is nine A. Adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash eighty-three and ordinance number ten seventy-four. Approval, approving the preliminary site and building plan and zoning ordinance amendment for the municipal service building, city of Chaska, PC number two thousand and twenty-five dash eighteen.
Mayor and councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is the second phase of planning for our municipal service building. So, if you remember, a couple of months back, we had our concept plan approval for the, the building. Since then, we've been getting into many more details on the, the project, both from sort of planning it from a construction standpoint, but also designing it from a planning perspective to make sure that the building fits on the site, that we're dealing with all the utilities and outside looks and all that type of stuff. So, our preliminary stage is really where we get sort of the, you know, it's the bread and butter stage of the, of the planning process where we really sort of deal with all the details of the building. So, once we get to the point in Feb, in December, when we had planned to bring back the final, it's really just sort of crossing Ts and dotting Is at that point. So, so this is where the, the bulk of that goes into. I've been really happy with the process we've been going through. We have Ortel here to share with us, but I'll turn it over to Liz, who will be able to talk about recommendations and things coming out of the planning commission.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. We have a preliminary site and building plan and zoning ordinance amendment this evening for the municipal services building, being proposed by the city of Chaska in conjunction with Ortel Architects. I do want to point out that the civil plans were not included in the packet, but there is a hard copy available if anyone needs to sift through those, I think, on the, up at your seats there. But I do have a few exhibits here in my presentation, too, if we need to refer to anything. The site in question this evening is located on Creek Road and west of Highway two twelve. It is just south of Chaska Creek Center and immediately east of Rural Residential on Wetzel Lane. The majority of the business, or the uses around here is primarily industrial or business park plan for the future. There's also an additional residential property just northeast of the property. Like Matt mentioned, we're at the second step in our three-step process, so this is when we get into more of the technical details of the plans, start to address any concerns or questions that were raised during concept plan approval, and looking at more of the bulk of the project proposal. So, since we're at the second step, we'll see another step coming very soon. We'll actually likely see it at our next council meeting, so you'll have one other look at this project. But a background, I'm not going to go over all of these pieces, but it was in September of this year that the concept plan was approved. So, we're, we're again at the preliminary step here. The property itself is primarily composed of four lots and twenty-two total acres. Three of those lots are kind of the, the bulk of the project area. And where the main building will go will be on that western lot or Lot One, Block One of the plat that's in place here, or also known as forty-five oh one Creek Road.
Is this close to where that, what's his name, Schlotterhoff thing was last week? The same roundabout?
It, no, it's the roundabout that's actually further to the, well, it's about where the red block is there.
Yeah.
Okay, I was trying to figure out for construction because we had said that was a low-used roundabout, so I.
Yep, yep, oops. So, it is across the highway that the Schlotterhoff parcel is, so it's not too far away. Outlet B is another lot composed in this project area, which will primarily hold the stormwater ponding, which you see on this existing conditions exhibit, as well as the fuel island that will service the municipal services building. Outlet C is the parcel in between Outlet B and Lot One, and that was put in place to be an extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south of the roundabout. Some grading work has already occurred on the site, which was from previous approvals back in two thousand and twenty-two, as well as some ponding, so all of that would kind of be refined with this proposal. The zoning for this property is in a planned industrial district, number ten, to be exact. And this district is proposed to be amended this evening to accommodate the new municipal services building. These are just a couple images from Creek Road, just to give you a view of the existing site out there.
I have another question just from those pictures. Are we planning to bury those lines when those, when all the, when the building would be done, so that they're not in the way of.
Those actually are, they're transmission lines, not distribution lines. So, they're actually XLs.
High ones are XL.
Yeah, the high ones are, are XLs, and so those will have to stay in place.
Okay. And we don't think that's a problem for, like, big equipment.
No.
Yep, I'll have a later exhibit kind of showing where that easement area is for those overhead lines there, but everything would stay outside of that easement area. This request includes a preliminary site and building plan for a new buil, building totaling one hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet and roughly thirty-eight feet in height. It also includes a new fuel island that would provide gas for city vehicles, a new parking lot that'll total one hundred and eighteen stalls. The building itself will house all of our public works operations, so streets, parks, sewer and water, mechanics, building maintenance, and our electric department. Currently, there's roughly ninety or so employees at the existing facility on Victoria Drive, but there is a anticipation that we'll have up to one hundred and eighteen employees out of this facility.
In the summertime, you increase it by another about fifteen people per seasonal, too.
So, the primary operations at this facility would mainly be vehicle storage, maintenance on the equipment for all city equipment, department workshops for each of the varying departments, and the office administration or public-facing feature of the building. The current site on Victoria Drive will hold the existing exterior storage that's there today, so that doesn't plan to come over to this facility necessarily. The comp plan guides this area to be business park, and the zoning is planned industrial district ten. The use that's proposed is consistent with both these pieces. There will be an amendment to PID ten to kind of update the language and the approving graphics within that district to accommodate this new use. This is the preliminary site plan. So, like I mentioned before, the building will be oriented on that western lot and will kind of be centered within that lot. It's primarily rectangular in shape, so it sits pretty balanced in the site there. Access into the site will come from kind of a main access off of the extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south. Two access points will come from that to service the, the main parking lot area, as well as ingress egress into the vehicle storage on the north side of the building. An additional access point was, which will be a secured access point, will come from the west side off of Creek Road, and again, that would only be for MSB personnel. And then another access is shown on the extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard, which would provide access to the fuel island area on Outlet B. The majority of the parking stalls are to the southeast of the building, which would be in proximity to the main entrance, which is also on that southeast side and highlighted in red on the site plan exhibit. That would provide the primary parking for both visitors and employees. Ancillary employee parking will also be on that southwest portion of the site, kind of in the back of the building or in sight. In terms of a parking standpoint, we do meet our own parking ordinance numbers for this size of facility. This is just a traffic circulation exhibit that we showed during concept plan, just to give an idea of kind of how vehicles are accessing the site and where they're coming from and exiting, just for reference. And then this is the landscape plan, which also shows the transmission line easement overlaid on top of that in yellow. So, this easement area has restrictions in terms of what can be built in it and landscaping going into it, so that's why you don't see plantings within this easement area. And the building is set back from that easement as well. You can do driving or parking areas underneath that, but that's pretty much it. The landscaping does meet our landscape ordinance for quantities and species and so forth. A majority of the landscaping will be oriented to that southwest side of the site, which abuts the rural residential areas. We did provide a few sightline exhibits, just to give you an understanding of the residential use in proximity to the MSB facility and the proposed birmingham and landscaping that'll happen on kind of those major sightlines. This exhibit here is showing that line of sight from the residential, the nearest residential to the southwest. So, there will be quite a bit of a distance between the home and kind of the nearest edge of the building, and in between that will be birmingham and landscaping on top of that, which, as it grows, it'll provide more and more obstruction to the building from that residential. Also provided some renderings that the architect put together, just to give a more realistic view of what's being seen from that nearest residential from the southwest, both from kind of what new installation of plantings looks like on the top exhibit here, and then as they continue to grow roughly twenty or so years, you know, getting bigger and wider, that view into the site will be less and less.
I appreciate you putting that in there, because I think sometimes that's, like, looking at things realistically.
Mm-hmm. It's definitely helpful. And then this one is from the nearest residential to the northeast, that's across from Creek Road, and I didn't include the, the twenty-year growth approximation, but this will still give an idea of kind of what's seen from that residence as well. The building, again, will house the various departments of public works, which they'll all have kind of their own designated area within the building, which is colorized on this floor plan. The office function, again, will be on that southeast side, so that'll house all of the main offices and cubes where that internal work would occur, as well as the main entry, main entrance and lobby. The majority of the building will be that vehicle storage space, which is shown in kind of this pale yellow-orange tone on this floor plan, and this is sized to accommodate both existing vehicle storage and future growth into the facility. So, anticipate that there will be additional vehicles and equipment being stored in that space. And then the bottom image is that view from the southeast, so looking north on the property at the main entrance and lobby area, just to give you a sense of what that visitor experience and employee experience is like. From a building materials and, um, design standpoint, it does meet our requirements for industrial buildings. So, the building will be composed of architectural metal panel, glass and windows, precast concrete and a couple different variations, and then brick as well. And those are kind of evenly balanced throughout the building. And then what we see from Creek Road, kind of that main viewpoint into the site, that top image is what's being seen from there. So, what we've said before, it, it's kind of a struggle or a challenge dealing with a large vehicle storage area, but the design team has done a really good job to provide variation in the materials, as well as variation in the massing to provide clear story windows and natural light into that space, and just provide a nice kind of front-facing look from Creek Road.
I think it looks really nice. It actually similar, looks similar to Chan Hessen High School's big windows on the one side when you drive down, what would that be, Lyman? And I also saw somewhere in this packet, I was just going to ask a question, where it said trees, no, what is it? No trees six inches or larger are impacted, so, or, so like the trunk, I assume six inches?
Yep, so, I mean, the site is pretty much graded out to its, its max limit, so there's no anticipation to bring down more trees.
That's really nice.
Kind of above what we would inventory or survey, so there's no plans to bring down more trees.
That's nice.
At the site, yeah. Another rendering looking northeast, so this is from like the backside of the site and kind of that larger parking area, the wash bays, and then the mechanic bays just to the east of that, and then the department workshops just to the east of that.
The wash bays will be like glass door, glass garage doors, for lack of a better term? Is that, or like?
I believe they are, yep.
How about like the storage spaces? Is that also similar glass?
I think this shows.
I just, the reason I ask is just a little bit of like, I guess it's more secure, but it's just like, if people are not supposed to be in that space and they can see what's in versus don't know what's in there in general, right?
The, the glass in the overhead doors will be full vision glass, so that people can actually see out as well, that, from a security perspective. What you're seeing is kind of the overhead doors on the left-hand side of this image, those will, those will be more translucent, that's the wash bay. And then the glass in general in the vehicle areas is going to be translucent, because we're trying to diffuse daylight throughout the entire space. So, it's, some of it will be vision, but most of it will be translucent dispersing.
Another view looking southeast from Creek Road as well. And then the second piece of the request includes a zoning ordinance amendment. And then the second piece of the request includes a zoning ordinance amendment to PID ten, which is the current zoning district out here. So that amendment includes updating the graphic exhibits that are approved with the site to be consistent with the ones that are coming through this evening. Amend the permitted uses for Lot One, Block One, to include municipal services building as a permitted use, just to be as straightforward as possible. And amend the building setbacks to include the setback from residential property lines and then amend the use for Outlot B to include the Fuel Island use within that. Just a few things to work on for final, which are some minor refinements, just including some details on the plans, including a trail segment on Chaska Creek Boulevard to kind of bolster the pedestrian connections that are coming from the southwest regional trail to the north and bringing that across the ravine, hopefully in the future, as development starts to occur south of the ravine, to provide kind of that full continuous connection for potential workers that might be living in the Clover Ridge neighborhood or anywhere adjacent and bringing them over to the ravine or over the ravine and into those other business areas. So just providing that continuous connection through this site and for future plans across the ravine. So with that, we're asking for two motions this evening. One is to adopt resolution number 2025 dash eighty-three, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan for the new MSB building and then based on the conditions that are listed in that resolution. And then a second motion to adopt ordinance number one thousand seventy-four, which is approving the zoning ordinance amendment to PID ten. Questions? Otherwise, we do have Andrew Cooper here on behalf of Ortel. Thank you.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any additional questions for Liz or for Andrew at all in regards to the building?
I don't have any questions. I think, you know, some of the questions got, got answered as far as during the process. And I think it's always really good to to note, and I, I can't remember if you had this at the beginning of your presentation, Liz, but you usually do, that, you know, this planning process is just like all of our other development planning process in the sense that we have a concept plan, which is a little bit more, you know, high-level view, thank you. And then the preliminary is the step that we're at right now, and then there'll be a final, and this is kind of where we really get to see the the vision of what this building's going to look like. And especially when you see the architectural renderings that are are on the screen and we, you know, talk about things like the number of trees and, you know, are are vehicles able to maneuver in the space and and all of those wonderful details. And so, not that we're breezing through this, you know, we've looked at this plan several times and we've discussed this. I think I, one of the things I wanted to touch on is this, as we've gone through this planning process, is just where we started and kind of where we're at now. And I think it's really important to note that when we started talking about our needs for the municipal service building, our original intention was to simply add on to the existing building that it's at. And what we found when we did the initial cost estimates was that, you know, it was going to cost money to move the Excel transmission lines that sit, you know, up against the property. And the first quote was like, yeah, that, it was like seven hundred thousand dollars or seven fifty thousand dollars. And it was like, okay, that's doable. We can, we can do that. And then when we started to really kind of rein in those numbers and really do those cost analysis, it was more like three million dollars. And that, you know, accounts for just, you know, the environment of inflation and all those other factors, you know, things just don't oftentimes just don't go down, they end up going up. And I could speak volumes to like why we have a four-year building plan out of that whole entire fact, you know, just to, things don't get cheaper, they get more expensive. But setting that aside, we decided that it would be more cost-effective for us to try to pivot. And I'm really grateful to staff for really evaluating some of the land opportunities that were still available in in our community to be able to do that. This building is a little bit different than our public safety campus, where it does not need to be centrally located. And we have the flexibility in regard to this site, where we're building a building that really just encompasses the the need for the additional office space and the 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 housing of our fleet and and things of that nature. And we're still utilizing our existing space in order for the other elements like cold storage and our, you know, salt sand, you know, mix and and those sort of properties.
Which decreased the amount of square footage we had to do on this site.
Right. And I think that is a very, I know it seems like, wow, you're building another building, but really, in reality, we're actually saving money because, you know, we're, we're creating a more efficiently designed building for our needs and we're still utilizing what we already have. And so we don't have to build a big, big building, just enough for those efficient needs. And so I just really wanted to touch on that. And then there's also really great opportunities, like having solar panels on the roof, you know, and and things of that nature that that are nice to see. But that is my speech and I will be done.
I actually have a question on solar panels. Remind me again, because I get lost out there a little bit. That is in Minnesota Valley's power district, but we do, over time, think that will become city.
Yeah, so we have, we have a agreement with them that basically goes through 2040. In 2040, which actually, when you think about it, it's not that far away. It's only fifteen years away, but so in 2040, we have the right to be able to go in and just purchase that territory from them. So it, it will eventually be in our territory.
Could we negotiate that the solar panel energy that's brought in come back to us rather than them, since they're, we're paying for them?
We actually tried to negotiate allowing them to have our own building and our own, like, even though, have it be like a, its own parcel within their district that we could serve, and they said no. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's been nice, because it's kind of strange. It's like, we have our own electric, it's our own building, but we can't serve our own...
We can't serve our own electric department with it, so.
Well, and, you know, this building will last longer than fifteen years, so we will get there, just obviously not today sadly, so.
Yeah, maybe one other thing, just to add on to the whole process too, is the, you talked about going through the entire planning process like any other project. That included the neighborhood meeting too, which we did beforehand. And I thought that really went well, because we sort of started out sort of showing what we're generally thinking about. You know, they shared with us their concerns. We went back, worked with Andrew to come up with some ideas and things, and then came back to them. And they're like, oh, we love this. This is great. You know, this is, you know, we, you know, because remember before, it was going to be an industrial building. You know, it was going to, you know, it could have been trucks coming in and out, you know, of loading docks in the back. And so, you know, the fact that everything's sort of geared so that all the noisy stuff is happening inside of a building, you know, they're not getting all that sort of stuff that you'd see in a traditional industrial building, I think they're very happy with the way it it turned out.
Yeah, there's been, I talked to several in that area, because that has been an interesting area for those residents, because you have six houses roughly right there, right? It's kind of a strange spot to live, because all of a sudden you look at a master plan and you're like, the house is here and I'm surrounded by industry, right? And 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 I think, to be honest, I think most of what I've heard from them is just, it's happy to start seeing things get finalized, because it's always the uncertainty out there, right? Like, what is that going to be? Am I going to be staring at a big cement prefab building and am I going to look at trees? And usage, right? Like, you're right. Like, I think, you know, the different types of usage that could end up in that space. So it's, they've been a good group, I think, to work with out there and and we got, and it's good that they're having good conversations, because it is, like I said, a little bit of a unique space where you had kind of six residential houses kind of in a group there. You wake up one day and look at the master plan and realize like, this isn't a residential space that I'm in, but kind of, and they're, you know, most of them are fully intent on staying in that space and happy with that outcome, so.
Yeah, and not to diminish, I mean, I get it, the fear of the unknown, I think, is a good, is a completely understandable and 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 driver of of a lot of those kind of conversations and everything. And I can speak to the existing building and knowing that where we're at, I mean, it was budding, it's budding up against way more than six homes and, you know, never hearing, you know, a complaint, even some like just right across the street. So, you know, I I like to think our, our city crews are good neighbors. And even though it's obviously a building that, yeah, you need to move trucks and vehicles around, there's activity happening on there, they're not, it's not, you know, bad or intrusive in any sort of, you know, extra sort of way.
And even though it's not a building, obviously, like public safety center where it's front and center where people see it, it's in a perfect location for us operationally from our service perspective, because one of the challenges we have our existing building is we can serve sort of the upper part of Chaska really well. It's really challenging to get everything we need to downtown, because we have to, you know, because a lot of things we use are like small tractors or equipment that drives really slow down Victoria Drive to get into downtown, because we don't have a storage facility other than this garage over here. With our new facility, not only will we have that same really good access to north Chaska, but we also are able to use that Creek Road Trail system to be able to get tractors down to Athletic Park or things like that. So it's going to be much easier for us to serve the entire community from there instead of just sort of the north part.
Yeah. That's good. Good. All right.
Does it need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I I do, and I, my computer, of course, decided I want to go back to sleep, so I am looking for a motion, yeah, to approve Resolution number 2025 dash eighty-three.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash eighty-three.
All right, which is the approval of the preliminary site and building plan for the municipal service building. So we have a motion from Councilmember Shovland.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Benish. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that is approved. And then we also have a ordinance number ten seventy-four that needs to be brought forward as well for approval. So anyone want to make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number ten seventy-four?
So moved.
All right. And that's the approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to PID dash ten, so. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Gra.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shovland.
Hatfield.
Or Hatfield, sorry. I went autopilot there for a second, my bad. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is adopted as well, so that moves us along to... Thank you, thank you for being here, Andrew. All right, so that moves us along to a public hearing for nine B, adopt Resolution number 2025 dash eighty-two, temporary transfer spending plan extension.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is an item that actually we took up a few years ago to be able to to consolidate and transfer unused TIF dollars into areas that we could u- utilize those because of a state law change. Julie's here to talk about an additional law change that the legislature had last year that allows us to extend those, so turn it over to her.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, Matt. Just for a little background, in Minnesota, tax increment revenue can only be spent on eligible public improvement items that are outlined in state rules and regulations. And that's what in, as Matt mentioned, in in 2021, the Minnesota Legislature temporarily expanded the allowable uses. So we could take pooled tax increment and use it on a broader range of items that support public development or private development, stimulate job creation and retention. And so that's when in 2022, council approved a spending plan to utilize these, this transfer of tax revenues. Unfortunately, that construction was required to start by the end of this year, which has not happened. Thankfully, in 2025 legislative session, the legislature extended the temporary transfer authority, pushing back the construction deadline to December thirty-first of 2026. It also permitted the use of interest earned on that, those funds that were pooled for the temporary transfer dollars. To implement these changes, the council has to hold a public hearing and then approve a resolution that amends the spending plan and includes the use of that interest in the funds that were transferred over. The spending plan itself identified three TIF districts. There are three housing districts where the pooled funds came from. In 2022, the amount transferred was approximately 2.25 million, and then with the interest that has been earned, as of 2020, the end of 2024, it was 2.5 million. We don't have at the end of 2025 figures yet. The plan also outlines how the city anticipates using the funds, and while specific projects weren't identified, it did state that the funds could assist with development goals that were identified throughout the downtown Chaska area. The amendment also provides flexibility for the funds to be used elsewhere in the city should the opportunity arise. Council will be required to approve any spending of those funds if a project does become, is identified. The plan was attached to your staff report. It was updated to extend the deadline to 2026 and includes the use of the accrued interest as well. With that, staff is recommending council hold a public hearing and then adopting the resolution amending that spending plan. The EDA will take similar action. They, the EDA does not have to hold a public hearing, but does have to consider adopting the amended resolution. I'd be happy to take questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Julie before the public hearing? I will say that it's probably great that you have someone at Baker Tilly putting these sort of reports together, because they're riveting. As I was reading mine at midnight last night. No.
Good, good sleeping.
Gotta love, yeah, trying to stay awake and read about TIF districting. Yeah. But nonetheless, it's still very, very important. All right, so if no one else has any questions, there is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open that public meeting, open that public meeting at seven forty-four. Does anybody like to come forward and speak? Seeing, see? No? Okay. Seeing there's that there's nobody here in our audience to really come forward and speak, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing meeting at seven forty-five. All right. And so with that, if there's not any other questions, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number 2025 dash eighty-two, amending the temporary transfer spending plan for tax increment financing district number twelve, tax increment finance district number thirteen, and tax increment financing district number nineteen. That can all be on one, right? Correct? Okay.
So moved.
All right, motion from Councilmember Benish.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shovland. All right, any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that moves us right along to item nine C, which is another public hearing, adopt ordinance number 2025 dash ten seventy-three, 2026 development fees, planning application fees, and building and fire permit fees.
Mayor, councilmembers, this, the item front of you tonight is something that we deal with each year in, at the end of the year, is more of a housekeeping item. It's making sure that we have our fees keep up with changes in the costs of actually providing the services that we do. Our practice over the past several years has been to increase our fees by the amount of inflation that we use for our general fund budgeting purposes, which we use 3.44% increase for the inflationary increases. And so that's with the ordinance, what you'd see actually listed in there. This deals with anything from fees, area charges, that that I'd mentioned before during our budget presentation about what they'll pay for for sewer and water or trail fees to contribute... trail fees to contribute to a trail system, or it could be, uh, submitting a planning application to go through the planning process or, uh, building ins- uh, inspections, uh, doing inspections for rentals for, uh, uh, through our fire department. So, everything that we sort of provide is a service, uh, that's out there, uh, we, uh, you know, recommend, uh, making those changes to the, the actual fees. We are required to have a public hearing, uh, to, uh, to change these fees each year. And then it does have to be a pass by an ordinance as well. So, certainly could answer any questions.
So, for, um, the planning application and processing fees, the way it's written, are we moving, like, right now it's application fee plus processing fee? Is that just for clarity and now it'll all show as an application fee?
Yeah, are they consolidating it down? Because that was my question.
To make it easier?
Because when you first initially looking at it, you're like, wow, it's really jumping. And then you realize that, oh, they were, you know, separating them out, and now it looks like maybe they're combining them together.
And it's one of those things that you can't do one without the other, so you might as well just show it as one.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, is that just, yeah, I was just gonna say, is there some sort of reason?
Yep.
And then I had another question for the, um, the rental, the rental ones, are the penalty fees and the reinstatement fees, are those new? Because they're both green.
Uh, no, we've had those in the past. I'm just trying to find them here.
Sorry, they're page ten of that. They looked new because they were green, but I could see that.
You're talking about the commercial mechanical and pumbling?
Rental dwelling license fees.
Oh, sure, sure.
The penalty fee and the reinstatement fee for suspended or revoked license are green, so they look new. I don't...
Yeah, I'll take that back. That's, I think that, uh, those were put in because they've had some trouble. Properties of not complying.
I was gonna also just give some feedback. Um, I know the letter that goes out for those rental dwelling fees, or for the rental dwellings, um, could probably use some like language clarity, because I know, I, and this is just from experience, having a rental dwelling, um, it was postmarked by, I think, March first. But, oh, and it ultimately they removed the late fee, but there just wasn't clarity on, does it need to be, does the application need to be postmarked? Do you need to have your inspection by? Like, there just wasn't a lot of clarity on that. So, there's maybe just opportunity there, and I can get you some more details, but it just made me think of it when looking at the fees and whatnot.
We can definitely take a look at that.
But I think definitely good, um, especially since more and more people are doing rentals to have those, so. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions other than what was brought forward. I think my, mine's more of just comment in the sense that when you, when I look at this, and I, I remember several years ago, I got a, a call from a gentleman that had rental property, and he was just very frustrated over the fees. But the fees are in place to make sure that the dwelling unit is safe. And that's really, you know, really the ultimate conversation that we ended up having, and it, and it resulted, you know, it was, everything was fine, and he understood. He wasn't, still wasn't happy about having to pay the fees, but he understood. But I think when I look at certain neighborhoods that are, um, really struggling right now with some of their infrastructure and their, um, kind of the quality of life, looking at this and seeing some of the opportunities that we have with, with these rental units and being able to go in and, and inspect them and make sure that they are safe and that, you know, there is, um, you know, reliable, adequate, you know, infrastructure there and that that's being cared for and treated and everything like that. That's, that's the important piece of, of the why behind why we do these things, that, you know, people living in that, that are renting, that they have that reliability insured on them as well.
Well, because they can't control it themselves.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And I can attest, the fire department does a great job as being a landlord. It was annoying for me because they come in and they really look at everything. But it was also very good. And I'm, like, they look at what things are plugged in. So, you know, I'm having to tell the tenant, you can't have that plugged in that way. And so like, that's always a little frustrating, but it's for a good thing.
Yeah.
So, they're very thorough and, um, I, I'm grateful for that. Because, yeah, I would say we're pretty good landlords, but if you don't have someone that's keeping up with that stuff, it is nice to have that kind of additional layer to come in and say, yeah, you've got to keep up with this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
They do the same thing to us, too. They, we, uh, I don't think there's one extension cord in this entire building.
It is a little bit, you're like, oh, come on, guys. But, yeah, it's all the things and making sure you have carbon monoxide where you need to and fire detectors where you need to, and those are all just really, and not all communities do this. Um, and it just is a lot more protection. And I think another good reason it's great to live in Chaska, just knowing whether you own your home or, in this case, rent, there's that, um, layer, uh, of protection where the fire department's literally coming in every other year to look at it.
Well, quite frankly, the, the houses that we tend to have more problems with are single-family owner occupied homes than rental homes. And it's because of this program.
Yeah, makes sense.
Which, I mean, that isn't always the case. I mean, a lot of communities, people don't like the single-family rental properties because they're afraid that they won't get taken care of. There could be safety hazards in them, all those different types of things. I think to your point, I think they do a really good job of making sure that, that these places are really safe places to live.
Yep.
Well, alright, well with that, um, we do have a public hearing, yeah, that we have to open. So, I, I open the public hearing to, um, at seven fifty-three, to discuss the development fees, applications, building inspection, and fire fees. And seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close that public hearing at seven fifty-four PM. And so then that leads to, uh, adopting most, or adopting, uh, Ordinance Number 2025 dash seventy-three, establishing these development, uh, Twenty Twenty-Six Development Planning Application Building Inspection and Fire Fees.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 2025 dash ten seventy-three.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Chevlin.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Wonderful. Uh, so that was the last of our action items, so that moves us along to bills. Uh, does anybody have a question on a bill at all this evening?
Motion to pay the bills.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's have a motion from Councilmember Gra.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Hatfield. Alright, uh, any other discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Benish?
Yes.
Councilmember Chevlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard?
Aye. Alright, bills are paid. Alright, so that moves us along to other business. Let's start with you, Councilmember Gra.
Alright, uh, a few things. Uh, I see the Santa Parade has been scheduled for December seventeenth. So, hope for winter weather. I'm not really sure what to hope for. I don't want super cold, but I feel like Santa's coming to town, there's gotta be snow, but not a snowstorm, because I did remember the time Santa had to come on the skid loader because of the, of the snowstorm. So, that's exciting. And, uh, we were talking about GS, GIS specialists and helping the Santa Parade map, so uh, that's always a fun time. Um, I will start, uh, start my acting lessons, because I see that Chaska's been named as a film-ready community, so I better touch up on my just public speaking, which I'm struggling with right now. Uh, so, that's kind of super cool. I think that, I didn't know that was a thing until I read that, so it's kind of need to be one of seven in the metro and hopefully attract some filming of our beautiful city. Uh, I will also shout out, although a rival sometimes, but a part of the same school district, I will wish the luck to the Chan Henson Football Team in the state tournament, who are playing Spring Lake Park, uh, that is, this weekend, so wish them luck. Rivals and friends at heart. Uh, and then last, I'm, actually, you saw this just last night, and I was actually just Googling to take a read, so I was gonna read what I have here. There'll be a new team USA at the final men's Olympics curling qualifier next month. Sunday night, the Chaska-based team led by Danny Casper, Dethrone, John Schuster's club, everyone knows Schuster, in a three-game final Olympic trial. So, I just thought that was cool, because I was like, I was on ESPN, and then all of a sudden like, Chaska-based Curling Center, I was like, oh, hey, look at this. So, that's awesome. Good shout out and...
So, this ti- I mean, they had on their jerseys, they had the Chaska Curling Center logo on there. And, I mean, they are a Chaska-based team. I mean, they, you see them all the time over there practicing and, they actually were ranked higher in the world than Schuster's team by like, three or four. But they're a super young team, they're only like twenty-three, twenty-four years old. But we're all, so, one of the, um, tough things with the Olympics for the, uh, curlers this year is that uh, Olympics only take the top eight teams, uh, eight countries, and then they have two additional ones. And because of the way that the US performed in Worlds last year, they weren't part of the top eight teams, so they have to go through another competition to get into. But they are playing so well, I have no doubt that they're, they're gonna make it in there. But we're already planning now, I mean, to have like the US Olympic team, you know, from Chaska Curling Center, we're already talking about what are we gonna do for, for special things over there, viewing, viewing parties, uh,
Apparel.
Apparel, events, things like that, uh, to, and, and hopefully a going away party for them, too, so that, you know, people have a chance to really give them a, a good send-off to, to go off to the Olympics. It's, it's really cool.
Yeah, that's, it's very exciting. I happen to tune in and see that, which...
I was following it on Twitter. There was, uh, I follow that and, um, a lot of it was on Schuster, because he's well-known in the state, right?
Is it the realtor Schuster?
No, not that Schuster.
But, yeah, it just talks about incredible historic run and his team and, and so, yeah, it was, I mean, it's, it is always interesting. I, I don't know when it hit me. I think it's because I was, I was like Gus Davis, and there's a lot of curlers there, too. Um, how much of curling is centered in the state of Minnesota, the Olympics, which is, was super cool. And right now, our home city, so that's awesome. And that is all I have.
That was wonderful.
Well, real quick, the, you know, the, they're all based out of Chaska Curling Center, but they all moved here to Chaska Curling Center. You know, uh, Da- Danny's from New York, uh, Ben is from Washington, um, let's see, Violet's from, uh, I think he's from Washington, too, and then there's one, the only one that's from Minnesota is from Mapleton. So, uh, they all moved here and based out of Chaska Curling Center. So, we're not just attracting people who live here, people are actually moving here to be a part of that.
Yeah, that's really neat. Wonderful. Councilmember Chevlin?
I only have two things. Um, I'm gonna let Matt talk about tree lighting, because he'll say it much better than me, so I'm gonna leave that to him.
I know I will, but...
I'm just gonna tell everybody, it's a fabulous event every year, and it, the weather is actually looking really nice this weekend, so, you should definitely come out for that. I heard forty-eight last night on the news, which
Wow.
for the end of November, we're gonna take it. We don't have another meeting before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to all those out there. And if you're in need of food, there are, I've seen so many signs of places that are offering Thanksgiving meals or, um, you know, take-home preparation stuff, so look around on the community websites, because there's a ton of resources out there. And then, yeah, I was gonna say, it's exciting to see the, uh, Chan Henson Football Team going all the way and takes me back twenty years to when Eden Prairie was that good, but, um, it's really fun to get involved with those and, you know, go support them, watch the game, go down to the, you know, stadium. It's, it's a fun time, and hopefully, they do really well.
If I can add one thing, I will point out that Southwest Transit has been providing some of that transportation to that, which is a point that we talk about, doesn't exist if Southwest Transit doesn't exist, right? Those are some of those things. So, I'll take that opportunity, because those are unique community-building exercises when you're, you just get on the bus and it's truthfully the easiest way to get there. And you're with your community and your friends and people you've lived with, and, and it's, it's fun. It's so, I'll take that opportunity to shout out Southwest Transit, because those don't exist by accident. That doesn't, you know, Metro Transit isn't coming out here to bring us to the football game.
The other thing I was gonna say is the Community Center does a great job with offering the days off of school, some events. So, I know my daughter is going to the swim and movie party, I believe, next week, but I already signed her up for the sledding and swimming coming up in December. And so, there's a bunch of those kinds of things if you're looking for interesting things to do when your kids have days off. I highly suggest looking at the Community Center range.
Great plug. I always will plug in the Community Center. Alright, uh, Councilmember Benish?
I don't have anything.
Alright, game on. Alright, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yeah, just a, uh, a few things, uh, I just want to shout out our Parks and Recs Department does such an amazing job. And I think we always see like the big events. I'm gonna talk about it, Mayor. And, but they do a lot of little events, too, and this weekend, uh, Mayor Hubbard, Mayor Johnson, Carver, and I took part in Puzzle Mania. And, um, I will let you know that I hope we are better at running cities than we are at puzzles, because we did come in last place. We were humbled.
Didn't finish.
Did you all have the same puzzle?
Yes, everyone had, but it was such a nice event. There was, I think, eleven teams, um, and just the Parks and Rec Department does such a good job with it. It was a lot of fun. So, even though we got like our butt totally kicked, um, it was a lot of fun. And they just do such a good job of making it fun. And, um, and they're doing another one. It's a very popular event. They're sort of expanding on it. But I think those like little events that aren't always spotlighted as the big ones, like, they, Parks and Rec does so many of those. Um, and it's just, so, look at their Facebook and their website, because they do things like that all the time. Um...
What strategy did you learn from that you implemented?
We went in with the strategy and everything.
First of all...
There were people in puzzle shirts, matching puzzle shirts.
Yes, we did not take it to that level, but I would say our number one, um, mishap was that you could have four people and we had three.
Yeah.
So, we were down to...
Accepting applications for a fourth.
I was never asked.
I don't think, I think we'd have to publicly announce it then.
But it was... But just a lot of fun. And I just, yeah, I'm always so grateful for Parks and Rec Department, all those, um, things they think to do. And there's another one in February coming up, so if you love doing puzzles, um, jump on that and, uh, maybe we'll see you there and we'll probably lose again, but...
Yeah, we were humbled. We were humbled, especially when the team that had the puzzle shirts completed it in just a little over an hour.
I thought they were just under, it was fast.
It was really fast. It was a seven hundred and fifty piece, piece puzzle. They gave us, what, two hours to do it?
It was the hardest puzzle I've ever seen in my life.
It was just a little over an hour. And it was a struggle. And it's sitting in my home now and I curse it.
It had a lot of patterns and thing, we kept seeing new things. You'd be like, oh my gosh, I didn't realize there was a clear...
There was another sandwich in this puzzle?
There's two sandwiches. What? It was crazy. Anyways, but just appreciate our Parks and Rec Department.
Yep.
So, they show up on a Saturday and put on fun events like that for us, so. Um, that was great. Uh, Deer Weekend this past weekend in downtown Chaska, it, another great, there's, the energy on Deer Weekend is always my favorite. Driving by, Carver drunk, seeing the line out the door at nine AM, um, literally down the block and around, um, onto Second. It's always my favorite thing. The shops, the other shops I heard had really good, um, attendance or people in them, um, in the restaurants. So, that's just always a, kind of an electric weekend, I think, downs, downtown. So, um, sip and shop Saturdays are still happening. So, you can go downtown this weekend and experience a sip and shop Saturday. Um, and it's been really fun to see the partnerships that have come out of that. So, I know like, Halaf Studios has partnered with, um, Siz to do some of those, um, pop-ups for the ship and sop, ship, sip and shops. Wow, that's hard and got dangerous there. So, um, that's always really fun. I noticed, uh, we had our Downtown Business Alliance meeting at the Chaska Commons Co-Working Space. Um, they opened that up, and it was just really cool to go in and see on their mugs, they have Jones Coffee and they, and Jones Coffee Supplies. So, the kind of, um, support that is in the downtown business is awesome to see. So, that was great.
Can I interject? So, I was in, I was at Siz's day for lunch, and I was talking to the owner, Ken, and he was telling me that, you know, they're having a little, um, dinner party, you know, festivity prior to the tree lighting. And he was, and because he went to the Business Alliance meeting, he got to know Ann from Jones Coffee, and they're gonna come over there and serve like hot beverages. Because he's like, we don't serve hot beverages. And so, you know, seeing those sort of partnerships happen... And so, you know, seeing those sort of partnerships happen, you know, is, is so rewarding, so anyways.
Well, that's a good lead into my next thing, which was that, um, you know, the city had, um, had Max Music Kent come in. Earlier this year and he gave his, uh, presentation on kind of the findings and suggestions to the Downtown Business Alliance. The one the council got a few weeks ago, um, so he gave that to the Downtown Business Alliance and they got to really talk about and make a plan for, for the next year. And it's just really fun to see them come together. Um, I think I've mentioned this, there's been more attendance at those meetings from the businesses themselves. Than really anything I'd seen in the seven years I've been, um, going to those meetings. And so it's just really exciting to feel the energy and, um, I think they're, the ideas Max brought forward and the thoughts he brought forward. Were really, um, a value add to the downtown business, kinda got their, their wheels going on some things they could do. And so they'll spend their next meeting kind of creating a strategy for, for twenty twenty-six and, um, and some of the goals and things they wanna attain. And it's at those meetings really where they, you know, the wheels turning and having those conversations. And I literally heard Ann and Kent have that conversation about, um, you know, what, bringing Jones Coffee over size. And having those hot beverages and things, um, and how meaningful that is. And so it was just, it, those are always really great meetings. Um, again, to the newer council members, always welcome to come to those. It's really interesting. And, but yeah, it was just great. So, great to hear Max deliver that, um, and they did kind of a quick strategy session or feedback session. And, um, looking, I know some of the things they mentioned were, uh, more partnerships between the businesses like we, we've seen between Hayloft and Size. And now Size and Jones and Jones and Chaska Commons, um, co-working and all of those things. So, just really exciting stuff happening downtown, um, and the businesses are so engaged. And I, I just really appreciate that, cause I think from a city standpoint, um, that's awesome when we, you know, we're, we're matching each other's efforts. To have a really vibrant downtown, um, and so, yeah. Like I said, Sip and Shop Saturdays are happening still these Saturdays coming up. The tree lighting is, um, the Sunday at six PM. I love that it's earlier. That's really fun to have that tree lit earlier and to kinda, there's just like a magic that happens. I feel like once that event goes and really like kicks off the Christmas season and, um, the holiday season and getting to just have those vibes downtown is a lot of fun. So, that is happening, um, and then Hometown Holidays, December sixth. The coloring contest is out on, um, their Facebook and without having a newspaper for that to go in, we've, they've, they've seen lower. Entries, participants, good word, um, in that, but I'd encourage you, they have a couple of different age groups, so if you have young kids. Print those coloring pages out and submit them. It's just kind of a fun thing and there's some prizes and whatnot, so. Um, that's Hometown Holiday coming up on December sixth. And, um, I think Cops and Donuts is happening this Wednesday at Duncan. Small Business Saturdays coming up, which we had the, um, proclamation, so that was great. And I think that was it. So, lots of good stuff. It's my favorite time of year.
Wonderful. Awesome. Okay. Uh, I sounded like a cheerleader there. Uh, okay, moving on to Elise.
Uh, a few quick things, um, on the film ready, just huge kudos to Julie, who got herself certified to be able to do this. And, um, Krista, these two have been working super hard to make that happen, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them on that. The Chaska Human Rights Commission has their annual Human Rights Award nominations open right now until December tenth. So if you know somebody, that application is available online, um, so I'd encourage you to, um, submit for somebody. And then, um, a few of us today took a trip to, uh, Supermercado, Supermercado Loma Bonita in Richfield. This is the same group of folks who will be opening in Cooper's. We had an opportunity to tour the store today. Eat there and just see what they're all about. And just kind of from a timing perspective, they plan to, um. Order equipment early twenty twenty-six, cause that obviously takes some time. You'll see some construction activity happening kind of mid twenty twenty-six, with the hope that it's kind of open about this time next year. So, they're working on getting the Richfield store up and going. If you have the chance to go over there and see it, we were absolutely amazed.
Where is it in Richfield?
Uh, it's the old Rainbow Foods off of sixty-six.
Oh, by Holy Angels?
Yep, by Holy, right across the street from Holy Angels, yep. So, um, take a look, go, go see what we'll be getting. They plan to keep a lot of the same things, obviously that store is much bigger, so they'll be kind of consolidating things. But just the bakery and the cakes they were putting out and just the meat selection and the deli. And just the made order food and, I don't know, I can't describe it. It was wonderful. So, um, it got, it got us very excited about it. So, that's it for my updates.
Wonderful. That is an exciting update. Julie, do you have anything to add?
It was a great experience. It's a great store and it has all sorts of food. It's not just Latino food. It's, you can just go shop for your main staple groceries as well. It's great.
Great. Awesome. Officer Pushen, got anything?
Actually, um, I was here last meeting. And you guys talked about the speed trailer, um, just to update that, it's put away for the winter, so if anybody had it on their wishlist or their neighborhood. They could still give us any, their neighborhood ideas, but it won't be back till spring.
As it goes by.
In tip-top shape. That's, that's a good report.
That's better than most of your colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, they don't like being put on the spot.
Better than a hundred percent of them.
They do not like being put on the spot, but. Zoom in, Krista, no. Um, Kristoff, you got anything?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right, all right. Matt?
No, everything's been said, everything's been said.
Did we really, did we talk about the, the tree lighting? You did, okay.
You can expand if you guys.
Well, I, I want, yeah, the tree lighting is happening at Fireman's Park at six o'clock. She did say it. I guess I got it confused with the Hometown Holidays, maybe.
You just should come downtown Saturdays and Sundays, all the rest of the year.
Yeah, and if you're really lucky, because we're film ready now, maybe they'll be shooting a Hallmark movie or something.
I'm putting out there, I'm available.
Yeah, I could give a little update on sort of the Hundred Club. So, uh, Hundred Club is the group that actually pays for the Christmas decorations. And I know Councilmember Gra, I talked about this last time, but, uh, the Hundred Club has the two hours before the tree lighting ceremony. Basically, uh, get together for orders and things like that, and it's basically to raise money for the, uh, uh. For all the Christmas decorations in, in downtown. And then right when we're done with that, we sort of migrate out to the Christmas tree out in the park and light that all up. And, and it was very deliberate this year that, uh, that we did it before Thanksgiving. Particularly, cause last year Thanksgiving, I believe, was early. And this year it's late, um, but it was, it was early and so, or s- one way or another, it felt way too late. When we were lighting the, that Christmas tree. And so, uh, the funny thing is, is, uh, most people I've talked to prefer that it's hap- that the Hundred Club's happening before Thanksgiving too. Cause people just get busy as they get into. Uh, December, so, uh, so both those events will be happening on, on Sunday night.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that update. Oh yeah, I'm sure. But, you know, he's told me he's actually really lit it in years past. With the one year that you had him flip the actual deal or whatever.
I do that every year.
I know, but you had him do it the one year and so now he's like.
About, the button is the actual.
Yeah, of course.
Wow.
Don't, don't mind, don't mind me over here.
I do find it funny though, that I've been doing this for years and years and years, that people see me standing next to a electric box and they don't like put two and two together. That the reason that the tree goes on is because I plug it in.
That's not true. There's a button, that's what it is, Santa's doing it. I don't know what they're talking about.
Christmas vacation where the mother puts the light on in the fridge room.
No, I hold my breath before every time, just praying that this thing goes on.
It's not one of those things where Bob goes out there, hug those guys.
You checked every bulb, right Clark?
It would probably be, I'd be sweating, sweating up there or whatever, so.
Funny movie, we should show it at the Hunter's Club.
Okay, c- capping off, I'll start with some recaps, uh, this last, um. This last week was Veterans, uh, Day. It was Tuesday. Uh, I'm like, what, what day was that? Anyways, uh, Middle School, Chaska Middle School West always does a really fabulous ceremony and, um, the, um. Legion, uh, color or honor guard, you know, uh, does a great job. And it's just really great to see all the students engaged and I had an opportunity this last year at the little reception afterwards to talk to some of the students. And I guess that leads me into that the referendum passed for the school district and a lot of them were part of band. And they were talking about how great it was to, um, be a part of band in fifth grade and that was one of those things that was maybe on the chopping block. So kind of hearing prospectively from the mindsets and, uh, of our students, it's, it's nice to see, uh, the community support those endeavors. For all of our kids to be able to thrive and, and really cultivate their passion, so. Um, and, uh, it was a great, um, Veterans Day ceremony overall and thank you to all of our veterans who serve. Uh, and then another recap, uh, the Human Rights Commission hosted the Celebrate India event on Friday. I did not do a count, but there were a lot of people there. It was very popular, um, second year. And they might outgrow the event center space if it continues. I know it outgrew the first space from the first year and just so many community members. That, um, live in our community, but also surrounding communities that really just were so excited to celebrate their culture. To have an opportunity to showcase it, uh, and then there was a woman who stopped me, um, after. Cause I was, I was the chief guest. That was what it said in the pamphlet. I don't think I've ever been like the guest of honor anywhere. And so I got to have the front row seat to watch all of the engagement and, and everything. But there was a woman that came up to me afterwards and she said that, um, she lives in Eden Prairie and she just started a new job. And her team is, uh, largely from India. And so she saw that we were having this event and she felt like this was a great opportunity for her. To come and learn more about, uh, the culture and be able to, you know, create those conversations and, and have, you know, that camaraderie. With, uh, her new coworkers. And, uh, she was completely blown away. And she said that, uh, she was like, I'm gonna be moving soon. I'm gonna look in Chaska. Because this is the community that I wanna live in, a community that really celebrates other people, uh, their heritage, their culture, their diversity. You know, this is a community that I wanna, this is a place that I wanna live in. And, and that is, um, meaningful testimony that we not only make the people, uh, who we kind of shine a spotlight on feel at home. You know, because we are celebrating their heritage and, and, and their culture, but also people that want to engage and learn more about, uh, their, uh, community members. That they feel tapped in and, and they're able to build community that way as well, so. Just wanted to share that along with everybody else. I did not have Puzzle Mania on my list, because I was.
You didn't wanna admit defeat.
Well, I mean, it was okay. I'm not that competitive, but, but that, that did happen this last weekend, but, um. We talked about Small Business Saturdays and Hometown Holidays, um, we have the State of the City speech, uh, with the Southwest Chamber. With our other, uh, neighboring communities of, uh, Carver, Chanhassen and Victoria. And so we are gonna give an amazing speech and blow them all out of the water, sorry ladies. Uh, and then after that, uh, they, there is a ribbon cutting, uh, happening and I don't know the specific time, cause I did not look that up. But it's for the Family Resource Center. We all got an email about it though.
I think it's one thirty to three or something.
Say you're probably right and it's, the Family Resource Center, um, is in the Moravian Church, um.
Yeah, one thirty to three.
In town here, so, so that's kind of following the, the Chamber Luncheon. Eighty Second Street is open. So, I wanted to mention that and Eighty Second Street is now Lyman Boulevard all the way. So, it's gonna be kind of, you know, something that we're all gonna have to get used to. But it's now considered to be Lyman Boulevard, but.
The trail's open too, I think I saw, which is exciting.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Go off the current Lyman, like, by Integris there?
Yeah, it will go through the roundabout. It kind of completes all the way through and the, and the residents are gonna be, you know, they're, you know, working through the, switch their addresses. And all that sort of stuff.
That's a Rusty Patch B situation, right?
Rusty Patch B, yeah, and the bats. So, um, yeah, so that's really exciting. I think the county is probably super excited to wrap up these road construction projects. And speaking of road construction, I do attend the Southwest Coalition Transportation. I, it's, I don't know what the whole acronym is.
Transportation Coalition, Southwest Transportation Coalition.
I thought there's another C in there. Anyways. I don't know, but nonetheless, um, you know, it's a group of, uh, you know, cities and entities, not just cities. There's like, uh, you know, the Arboretum's a part of it and there's other entities a part of it. And it was at the Arboretum, so we got to talk a lot about, uh, the upcoming road construction project, which is happening, um, starting next summer. And then in twenty twenty-seven, but the reason why I mention this, not that it's necessarily in Chaska. But the, um, intersection of forty-one and five will be closed, because they're gonna be doing those improvements this year. And that's gonna have a, a big impact. And even though we are technically not doing anything to forty-one this year, there is stuff happening to forty-one. And it's unfortunate, but it's the cost of a growing community, so.
Short road that's had so much construction.
It's the shortest state road in Minnesota.
Is it?
Yeah.
Are you serious?
Yeah, cause it only runs from seven.
Yeah, and that poor road has just been smacked with construction.
Also the cutest.
So, yes. So, yeah, their, their focus is on the, you know, they're gonna kind of flip it. They'll do stuff on the south side of the, you know, Highway five. And then flip around and do the north side to kind of beef up that intersection before they close everything down in twenty twenty-seven on that, on that stretch. To do that part of Highway five, but I just wanted to make sure we kind of threw that out there, cause you know, who doesn't wanna talk about road construction once we're all finishing it all up? Couple other things, uh, there are commission applications happening. So, uh, I've been stopped by several folks that are just very interested in becoming more involved. I've directed them to fill out commission applications. I'm assuming we have, I, I would say we have openings for probably every commission. As kind of we have sort of a cycle that we, you know, um, we have where some people fall off and, you know, other people might be able to re-up. I know there's some on certain commissions that they're tapped out, they're at their nine years and so they're done, so I know for sure that's happening. So if you're interested in becoming more involved in our community, commissions are a really great way of making that happen. The commitment level, um, generally is one meeting a month and then dependent on the commission, you might have other sort of things. You know, you might have a big packet to read or you might have maybe other social events like the Human Rights Commission facilitates and everything. But it's not a ginormous commitment and it's a great way of tapping into your community, so.
And a couple of commissions are, just to add, have youth positions o- open as well. So, if you're a youth looking to get involved, um. Parks and Human Rights, yes, have youth positions.
Yes. Yes, so, yeah, good point, so. Uh, and then, I think that was probably the last thing on my list, unless there, did, did I miss anything? Oh, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I hope everybody has a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving. And so that, I think that's everything on my list. Does anybody have anything else to add? Otherwise, I, I think we have an EDA meeting that's following this. And so, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion from Councilmember Shovlin. And a second from Councilmember Benish. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. All right, and that, uh, has us going right into our, unless Krista hollers at me and tells me to stop. Goes into our, um, call the order for the Chaska Economic Development Authority. Elise, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Benish?
Here.
Commissioner Shovlin? Commissioner Chevlin?
Here.
Commissioner Gra?
Here.
President Hubbard?
Here. All right, all right. So, uh, next we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda.
All right, we have a motion from council member Chevlin.
Second.
And a second from, I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, Chevlin and a second from Commissioner Benish. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, agenda is adopted. And that moves us along to the approval of the previous EDA minutes of September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. Does anybody have any addition or corrections on the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
All right, so a motion from Commissioner, uh, Gra. And a second from President Hubbard. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. And then we have, uh, our discussion item, which is five A, adopt EDA resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four, amending temporary transfer spending plan.
Uh, Madam President and Commissioners, the item in front of you tonight was, uh, the exact same item you saw in the council meeting. Uh, we have to not just approve it by the council, but also by the EDA to basically amend our temporary transfer spending authority for TIF districts, uh, or for three TIF districts, uh, coming in, uh, and being able to be spent in the, uh, downtown. So again, uh, no public hearing, but we do have to have the EDA approve it too.
Wonderful. I know. These are always kind of easy. I feel like we sort of breeze into them. But we've talked about them just, I don't know, maybe thirty minutes ago or so.
And had a public hearing.
And had a public hearing. So. It was. And so was all, like I said, and all that reading on, uh, on the TIF, um, you know, districts and whatnot. Anybody have any, uh, questions that they didn't think of or that they're wanting to talk about now? All right. So, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt, uh, e, resolution EDA, uh, twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four, amending the temporary transfer spending plan for tax increment financing district number twelve, tax increment financing district number thirteen and tax increment financing district number nineteen.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four.
All right, you were gonna go through all of that because I, I was trying to spare whoever. All right.
I figured I'd go for part, partway.
Sure. All right, we have a motion.
The part of the page on our screen.
Yeah, a motion from Commissioner Benish.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hatfield. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. And that leads us over to other business. Does anybody have anything, um, in other, other business that they'd like to discuss? That relates to the economic development authority?
Leads to this here was more council, but our, um, our tax meeting is the next one, our truth in taxing.
Yep.
Are, have statements been mailed to houses?
Uh, they probably have been mailed. They typically are, are mailed by the middle of November. I have not seen mine come. But, uh, yeah, I mean, typically they're coming this week during.
Okay. Just everybody to watch out for those. And then if you have questions, the next council meeting, which I believe is in December.
Yeah, so December first is our truth and taxation hearing. So that's basically when we present the general fund budget, uh, and, uh, we don't take any action that night. We just take any comments from people. And then the second meeting of the month, which is the fifteenth, uh, is when we, uh, adopt our tax levy and our budgets, uh, for next, uh, for next year, for not just the general fund, but all the funds that we've looked at.
So watch for those to come to your house. And if you have any questions, comments, concerns next week or two weeks, December first would be a great time to come to the council meeting.
Yeah, great to know. Awesome. All right. Any other, other business? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion from, uh, Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gra. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.